The following was recorded in front of a live studio audience at the Studio 21 Podcast Cafe. This is the United Podcast Network.
The following program is closed captioned for the thinking impaired.
By tomorrow, I will rule the world!
You think he's gone? He's not gone! That's the whole point! He's never gone!
Is this some radical new therapy?
You see!
Do I have to do a show today?
I mean, you can go home now if you want.
Thinking about it. If I go home, I can't get myself in trouble. I gotta get through four more days. Four more days of keeping my mouth shut.
Oh yeah.
And then release the cracking.
Look out next week's show.
Next week's show might be a double show.
Yeah.
I might do, I might do a two hour show next week.
You got a lot to say, I'm sure.
Well, I'm gonna be in court on Monday, so once this thing gets lifted, I'm gonna have a lot to say. My lawyers are already pissed off with me. Just the first three seconds of the show. I can already hear it in the back of my head, "What are you doing?" It's alright, we're all good. Can't gag me forever. The press should be there. Monday at 3:00 at Salem, New Hampshire, this record, the press should be there. They should absolutely be there. I'm a big, big, big believer in the First Amendment, the right of a free press. We're gonna have a lot of free press next week.
I bet.
I don't even know if I have right, believe it or have it, I don't have it. Can't hear myself either. They just pulled me up a little bit. I'm at least used to hearing-
I think once, once the music goes down, they can stop.
I'm at least used to hearing myself. It doesn't matter, because it doesn't change the, the volume of what's going out, right? What I hear in my headphones, whether it's up or down.
Once the music stops, so you'll hear yourself loud.
Right. But I'm saying as long as they can start churning it up and down, doesn't change the output of the volume.
Yes, it does.
Oh, it does?
Yes, that's why I don't touch it often.
Alright, okay, fair enough.
When your-
Did not know.
When your levels are good on my end.
How about my sponsors? There they are.
Hey, Randy Carter's in the house.
Love Randy. Love Randy, love Jason. All my friends at Clear Path for Veterans, all my friends at the VA. I spent a lot of time on the phone with the VA the last couple of days. I am marshaling my forces, believe me. By the way, um, when you played this on the week that I wasn't here, you didn't do the "wait for it, wait for it." Wait for it, wait for it, wait for it! It's like radar on mesh. Alright, let's get this show on the road. Hi, how you guys doing? My name's Tom Ducking, here with the Paying Attention Podcast. Hi, our top two guys, Smoke Shop at the Studio 21 Podcast Cafe, at least for now. At least for now. We're gonna see what happens on Monday. I have a feeling these things are gonna turn around very, very quickly. We have a great, well, no, I don't, honestly, I'm lying. I'm sorry. I can't lie to my audience anymore. I don't know that it's gonna be a great show. It very well could be a sucky show. I mean, could it possibly be any better than the show that I wasn't here where we just ran forty minutes of like an empty chair? Because that was the highest rated show I've had all year, and I wasn't even here.
You're really upset about this, aren't you?
Well, I'm not, I don't know if I, see, here's the thing. Half of me is thrilled that people were so intrigued by what's going on, that they, that they all tuned in to see, because everybody after I posted that story thought I was gonna come in and talk about that story. As did I. But then I got served with court papers like thirty seconds after I posted the story, and then I couldn't say anything. So, I think people, so half of me is thrilled that I had that many people tuning in, thinking I was gonna talk about that story. And by the way, all of you, tune in next week, right? But the other half of me is like, "Yeah, but, on the other hand, the show that I wasn't here had higher ratings than when I am here, and what does that say?" So I don't know, I'm like, I'm half and half, I'm bipolar on the issue. Let's thank our sponsors, Century 21 McLennan Real Estate in, uh, Methuen. They're on Broadway in Methuen, and we love Sam and Matt and Janet and everybody over there. Um, our condolences, I didn't do this last week, our condolences to the McLennan family, Mr. McLennan has passed. Um, and, uh, as somebody who has lost, he lost my father, although it was thirty-five years ago, uh, still feel it, thirty-five, thirty-four years later. Um, so, our condolences to the McLennans, and we've gotta get Matt and, uh, Sam back on the show to talk about the real estate market. If you notice, in The Valley Patriot, we post the property sales for Lawrence, Methuen, Andover, and North Andover every month. The foreclosures and the property sales. And if you notice, like a year ago, go to like a year ago and download the PDF of The Valley Patriot for April of last year, and then download, and then take a look at this month. A year ago, we had three and a half pages of listings of real estate, uh, property sales and foreclosures. This month, we had about a page and a third. So it's like, it's cut in half, actually, more than half, it's cut more than half. So the real estate market is not doing as well as I think we all thought it would be at this point. Um, I don't know that there's gonna be a bubble, I don't know if the bubble's gonna burst, I don't know what any of that means, because I'm not a real estate person. Um, but I know that when we get Sam and Matt in here and they talk real estate, they kinda make it all, they make it all, uh, they say it in such a way that the average person that doesn't know real estate can understand it.
Yeah.
And that's why we wanna have them back, because the real estate market in the Merrimack Valleys, which drives the entire economy of the Merrimack Valley. Uh, also, the Zany Pesci Law Office, so as we're talking about properties, if you're thinking about declaring bankruptcy, those, that's the place to go. Right? If you're having a hard time, you're upside down in your mortgage, you got all kinds of debt, you don't know what to do, call the Zany Pesci Law Office in Methuen, and they will take care of you. Also, Marston and Son Construction, uh, Borelli's Deli at Par 28, as well as, uh, the new, uh, so the guys that own Borelli's and Par 28 also own a new bar in Havre. And I was there at their grand opening, the food was amazing. Um, and trust me when I tell you, I don't just say that because people are advertising, because they're actually not advertising right now. Like, because they were opening a new place, they had to consolidate some of their money, they pulled their ads for a little while, they are gonna come back. Um, so I'm not just saying this because they're spending money with me, because actually technically, right now, they're not spending money with me. But I was there on the, on the, um, uh, grand opening, and the hot wings were great, and the food was really good, the, the quality of the food was really good, and the service was amazing. You had Jimmy behind the bar, and he was, Billy, Billy behind the bar, he was pretty good.
Did you say what the name was?
Uh, oh, I'm sorry, it's Time Out, you're, this is why you have to have a good producer.
There you go.
Right? Uh, the Time Out Sports Bar on Washington Street in Havre, and there's plenty of parking in the back, I parked in the back, so there's plenty of parking. Um, and, uh, I think on Wednesdays, I wish they'd change it though, because I got TMF Wednesdays. On Wednesdays, they have fifty cent wings. So that's like, if they would do that on any other day, I would be at Time Out Sports Bar for the entire day. Because when I go to Salvatore's, that's all I do, I order, I order like five orders of hot wings. And then we just sit there and chat for the entire night. So, uh, alright, so that's Time Out Sports Bar in Havre. Who else? We have Tomo and Shake and Seafood, Clear Path for Veterans, New England, AFC, Urgent Care. We haven't had Lisa on in a while, maybe we'll get her back. I love having her here because she cringes every time I say something controversial. Right? And then, at one, what did she say the last time she was here? She said, "Tom, I love you, but you are an HR nightmare." Because I say things that if this was a work setting, I think everybody would be fired.
Right.
Uh, Pleasant Valley Landscaping Contractors, contractors, ran into Dave Inconsoli in Andover yesterday. Um, I was coming back from my lawyer's office, I was spending a lot of time with lawyers. Um, and I was coming back from my lawyer's office, and I was coming down, I think, High Street. And I drove by, and I said, "That looks like Dave Consoli on like, uh, on like one of those little, um, ride along mowers that they have." And I went, "Yeah, but he's like the owner, that can't be him." So I went another half a block and said, "Screw it, I'm gonna turn around and go see if it was him." And it was! I turned around, I went back, and there he was, he's riding on a, he's like, "I had six guys that were supposed to show up today, and you know how many showed up? Nobody." So I gotta get out here and do it myself. So if you're looking for a job, Pleasant Valley Landscapers. Now, here's the thing, if you're looking for a job, you have to be willing to work. Because Dave Inconsoli will hire you if you're willing to work. But boy, you'll make a shit ton of money if you wanna actually show up on time and do the work that he assigns you. Because Dave is a great boss to work for, he's, he's not a micromanager, I can tell you that from like the many conversations we've had. He's the kinda guy that will task you with doing something, and as long as there's no complaints, he's not gonna look over your shoulder and be telling you how to do it every five minutes. He's gonna let you do your job, and then he's gonna pay you a shit ton of money. So if you're looking for a job, Pleasant Valley Landscaping Contractors is the place to go, and you can tell them that we recommended you here on the Paying Attention Podcast. Clear Path for Veterans, New England, oh, we already got to them. Oh, and a free shout out to our buddies at JG's Ice Creams. Starting to get warmer, right? At least it's supposed to be getting warmer, I don't know if it actually is getting warmer. But it's, it's, it's gonna be getting warmer soon. And, uh, if you're gonna be getting ice cream, you need to be going to JG's right here in Salem, New Hampshire on Broadway. Is this South Broadway? I think this is South Broadway, right?
Yes, this is.
So, South Broadway in Salem, New Hampshire, and Lowell Street, Lowell Street? I think it's Lowell Street in, in, um, in Methuen. It's 110 heading toward, heading toward Lowell, heading toward Drake, anyways. Uh, so alright, so that's our sponsors. Uh, well, let me see, we got a couple of things I wanted to wrap up before we get into any heavy topics. Actually, I'd love to just do a whole show of me just chatting. Because that way, I just don't get myself in trouble. I get into the heavy topics and I end up in trouble every time. Uh, let's see. Oh, um, so we had, uh, about two months ago, we had Jocelyn from Sevmar. Uh, Sevmar is a restaurant on Main Street in Salem, New Hampshire. It is where the old Jim's Kebabs used to be, it's Lebanese food, it's amazing, it's amazing. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna tell you, I'm a fat bastard now, right? Since I came out of the hospital, I've gained over fifty pounds, all I do is eat. No matter how much I eat, it's never enough. No matter how much I sleep, it's never enough. It's one of the, it's one of the side effects of having been in a coma for eleven days, my doctor's still trying to figure it out. But I can tell you, I eat a lot, and I eat out a lot, because I'm, I'm, I'm not a big fan of cooking. Like, I'll cook if there's other people there, I like cooking for other people.
Me too.
But I don't like cooking for myself. Um, so I eat out a lot, and I, I spend a lot of time at Sevmar on Main Street in Salem, New Hampshire. And I was with my friend Octavian one day, and he, he had the lamb chops. And now, I've never liked lamb, my whole life, people have pushed lamb on me, my mother used to make it, I used to hate it. It's one of the few things my mother used to make that I didn't like. Um, we would go to relatives' houses and they would have it, and they would push on me, and I hated it. I don't like it raw, I don't like it cooked, I don't like, I'm like Sam I am, I don't like it this way, that way, however way. But I was with Octavian one day, and he ordered the lamb chops, and he couldn't finish it. And I had finished my meal, plus I had finished the two appetizers that I had ordered, plus I had finished the cheesecake for dessert, and I was still hungry. So Octavian said, "Listen, if you're still hungry, don't order something, have my, I have a lamb chop, I'll have to have my lamb chop." And I was like, "Listen, you people with your freaking lamb, I've told you a hundred times, I don't like lamb." But I was so hungry, I said, "You know what, screw it, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna bite the bullet, I don't wanna wait for another meal, we actually have to get somewhere, I'll eat the lamb." It was so damn good, and I've told this story before, and I keep telling it, because if you can get me to eat something and like something that I normally don't eat or like, that's something. Because most people don't go out of their comfort zones, including me. And I ate the lamb chop, and I liked it so much, I ordered two orders to go, and that's all I ate for the next two days in my office. Actually, it didn't really last two days. It lasted one day, that was it, that was gone. Well, why am I bringing all this up? Why am I just repeating what I've said before? Yes to Kill Time, because I have nothing else to talk about, that could be true. But also, because Jocelyn has opened a new satellite restaurant. And it's on Merrimack Street in Methuen, where Savastano's used to be. And Savastano's was where Sutain used to be, which used to be, our friend Mimi, who ran Sutain, was, um, serving Lebanese food. So now, back at that spot, Lebanese food, where it should be, that's exactly where it should be. And we were there for the soft opening. Um, I was, I was thrilled that Jocelyn called me and said, "We're having our grand opening on Thursday, but on Tuesday, we're having Friends and Family Night. We'd like you to just come and try the food and just enjoy the night." So I went with State Senator Pavel Piano and Lawrence City Councilor Stephanie Infante. And we sat at the bar, and we tried a whole bunch of things on the menu, it was great. Um, I've since been back with Jessica, uh, Jessica from Enterprise Bank. And, um, and I think I was back another time too at Ronnie Marston. And every time I've gone in and I've tried something new on the menu that I haven't tried before, amazing food, and prices aren't, aren't that bad. I mean, they're not top of the line, they're not bottom of the line, they're, they're right, I think, where they need to be, if you're someone that eats out a lot. So congratulations to Kelvin and, excuse me, Jocelyn at Sevmar's, uh, for opening a new satellite restaurant, and it's called Jocelyn's at Sevmar. Did I have that right? Wait, I have it right?
I don't know.
It's on the front page of The Valley Patriot, we actually gave them a free ad, I like the food so much. It's called Jocelyn's at Sevmar, 319 Merrimack Street, uh, in Methuen, it's right across from our buddies at Borelli's Deli. So here's what you do, you go to Borelli's Deli, you order your, you order your meats, throw them in your car, you go across the street, you have yourself some dinner, and then tomorrow, you have, you have meats in your fridge for, for lunch. What else do we have? Uh, the new Harrisons, we had Dean Chongriss here a couple of weeks ago, and, uh, he is opening, I think, within the next week now. Like, every day, I'm getting a new text from him saying, "We're getting closer, we're getting closer." Kinda like my court date, "Getting closer." And, um, he asked me to come by today, that I think they're gonna be testing their chicken barbs. Here's what I love about Dean, every time they try a new menu item, he sends somebody over with a tray of whatever it is to my office. So I can eat it, and, because he knows I'm a fat bastard now. So I'll, I'll eat it, and I'll take notes on what I like, what I don't like, is it too dry, is it not too dry? And then I send him back my, my critique of the food, and then he works that into how they're gonna make their next batch, and how they're gonna tweak the recipe, which is great. I become like the official food taster of the new Harrisons, which is gonna be called Patrick's Eatery. And so I think today, they're doing the chicken barbs, I'm gonna go by and picking up a tray of chicken barbs, and we're gonna see how those are. Um, so we're gonna keep an eye out for Harrisons. Uh, the new Harrisons is called Patrick's Eatery, and it's going to be the old Harrison's recipe, before the son took it over and screwed it up. It's gonna be, he's partnering with Jim Monier, who has the original Monier's recipe for Lebanese food from Monier's in South Lawrence, and he's gonna have the chicken barbs from the old Tally Ho. So he's got all these original menus from all of these landmark food places in the Merrimack Valley over the last thirty years that have gone under, or have just kinda closed, or the family just kinda died off, or whatever, and he's bringing them all back in one place. So it's gonna be a really amazing thing to watch, because so many of us old timers who love to eat, who miss places like Monier's, and miss places like the Tally Ho, and miss the old recipe from Harrisons, and stopped going because they got a new recipe and it wasn't that good. Now we've got another place to go, but it's all in one spot. So, we're looking, uh, uh, really good luck to Dean Chongriss. He's spending a lot of money, a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of time away from his family to get this thing going. Him and, uh, and Amanda Panda, and everybody over there who's, um, working around the clock to make this work. Um, I'm, I'm really pulling for those guys.
Yeah.
And I would say that, even if they didn't wanna advertise with me, I would be saying that no matter what. Uh, I just like to see good people doing good things, and, and producing something good in the community, and I think this is gonna create a pretty good buzz. And it's gonna help the economy of that Route 114 area that's kinda starting to die now.
Yep.
And you, we started to see it, like, the loft isn't doing as good as it used to, and Joe Fish isn't doing it as good as it used to. Of course, they have to go back to, Joe Fish has to go back to the, um, Deep Sea Scallops. They go back to the Deep Sea Scallops, their, their, their entire situation will change with their customers, I promise you. But they don't, nobody listens to me. It's funny how no one listens to me until it's too late, and then they go, "Gee, Tom, we wish we'd listened to you." Well, you know, what can I tell you? Had this conversation with an elected official just last night. Alright, what else do we have? I can't talk about that, I can't talk about that, can't talk about that. That one will put me in jail if I talk about that. Alright, let's-
Next week.
Oh boy, you have no idea. I cannot, for people who didn't want their, their names out in the public, boy. Alright, alright, can't say it. So, in Havre, let's go, let's go to our Havre story, you've been following this. Scott Wood is a guy who ran for, uh, Mayor in Havre last year. He ran against a favorite son, Melinda Barrett, she's in with all the corrupt insiders. All the corrupt insiders lined up behind her, sucked up to her, because she was the favorite of the Democrat Party. She ran around the community yelling, "Inclusion and diversity and white privilege," and all this stuff. And of course, those are the brainwashed trigger words to get people to not pay attention to real issues. So, um, Scott Wood ran against her, and during the campaign, somebody, I'm just gonna give you a brief synopsis. Somebody leaked to the press that Scott Wood had used the N-word, maybe, in a text message, maybe, twenty-five years ago. And they leaked a piece of paper that looked like it was just printed on a Word document, like somebody typed out in a Word document, "Scott Wood, black people have the N-word." And then printed it out, and they put it in his personnel file. Well, at the time that it happened, he sued the city and had an agreement with the city that because there was no chain of custody, they couldn't prove it came from him, they had no IP address tracking it back to his phone. There was literally no evidence whatsoever that this was actually a real thing, that the city agreed to remove this from his personnel file, and to hire him anyway, because that was the only thing in his background that was stopping him from becoming a police officer. Now, fast forward a few years later, he's on the school committee, he's running for mayor, and he's a Havre police officer. And all of a sudden, somebody leaks this document, the city never took the document out of his folder. Never took the document out of his folder. They waited to hold it just in case this guy got out of line. This is how politics works, this is how people operate in government, especially in a local government. So Scott Wood starts gaining traction against Melinda Barrett while she's running around going, "Diversity, equity, inclusion, white privilege! First woman, we have to have women, go girl!" And all that crap. That absolutely means nothing in anybody's, in anybody's real life, doesn't do anything to change quality of anybody's life in Havre. And Scott Wood starts gaining ground on her, and all of a sudden, her buddies in the, in the Havre Police Department leaked the document out to the press. And it ends up in the hands of one of Melinda Barrett's big backers, my buddy, Tim Coco, sorry to say, but that's the case. Tim Coco runs with it, every story that had to do with Scott Wood. If Scott Wood repainted the outside of his house, the story would be, "Scott Wood, who used the N-word in a text message twenty-five years ago, was seen painting his house yesterday." And that's how they framed every single story, to make sure everyone on the planet knew, "Melinda Barrett's the person to be voting for, not Scott Wood." Okay, so, the city council at the time, Melinda Barrett sat on the city council, and they held an illegal secret meeting. Because the city council, as a body, as a government body, had to step forward and, and involve themselves in election interference to help one of their own, Melinda Barrett. They had an illegal meeting where they conspired to have, as a body, the Havre City Council write a letter to the press to tell us all that racism is bad. Because, really, if you're not sure that racism is bad, getting a letter from the city council in Havre telling you that racism is bad is really gonna push you over the edge. That's gonna be the, like, the defining thing for you. That like, geez, I'm not sure if racism is bad, but, you know, Melinda Barrett on the Havre City Council says that racism is bad, so, I guess it is then, I guess we'll just all start being racist. All the racists in the Merrimack Valley immediately stopped being racist the minute the Havre City Council released a letter saying that racism is bad, and condemning Scott Wood over something that wasn't real. And they conducted election interference. So The Valley Patriot filed a open meeting law complaint with the Attorney General's Office. Attorney General's Office slapped them on the wrist. The Havre City Council admitted at a public meeting that yes, they violated the open meeting law, and promised they were never gonna do it again. "We're very, very sorry, we're never gonna do it again." Right around this time, Paul Magliacetti, who was on the Havre School Committee, was sent to an open meeting law training, since now everybody's kind of being made aware of the open meeting law. And by the way, what is the open meeting law? Let me just give you a real brief on that. If you have a, a government body and there's five members, you can't have a majority of that body discussing any city business unless it's at an open meeting that's been pub, that's been published and posted, so that members of the public know what's gonna be talked about, and they can show up, and they can participate in that discussion, and have a hand in what their government body is going to say. So if you have five members on a, on a, any board, say a planning board, you can't have three members go out to dinner and then start talking about planning board stuff. That's a violation of the open meeting law, that's a secret meeting, it's illegal. People actually go to jail for that. Hasn't happened in a while, but it does happen. So the Havre City Council, I think, has nine members. All nine members, all nine members conspired behind the scenes with emails and text messages and phone calls, discussing this issue outside of the public view. And then they all signed a letter, and then they all ambushed Scott Wood in the press with this letter to interfere with the election, to make sure everybody knows, "Scott Wood's a very, very bad man, and you should vote for Melinda Barrett." Now, it didn't say that, but that was the intent. So the Attorney General's Office slapped them on the wrist, told them not to do it again. Well, now here we are, a few months later, and Melinda Barrett is the mayor. Because of the efforts of Tim Coco, I think I said Tim Wood earlier, it's Tim Coco. Uh, because of the effort of Tim Coco, and Melinda Barrett, and the Methuen, uh, the Havre City Council. Uh, my head's still in Methuen, because I'm investigating something in Methuen today, so it's, 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 I'm mixing them in my head. So the Havre mayor is now Melinda Barrett, she took office in January. And as the mayor, she's chairman of the school committee. And the Havre School Committee chooses who sits on the Whittier Tech School Committee, you follow me? So the Havre School Committee votes amongst themselves to appoint people to the Whittier Tech School Committee. And the chairman of the Whittier Tech School Committee is who? Scott Wood. So he ran for mayor and he lost. And then, after they, after they did all the things that they did, and then he's still on the Whittier Tech School Committee, and the woman who beat him now sits on the Havre School Committee, and what did they do? Here's what they did, abuse of power. This is exactly what they did. They had another illegal secret meeting to change the rules to kick Scott Wood off the Whittier Tech School Committee. Yeah, they did. That's exactly what they did. You know what else Melinda Barrett did when she became mayor? She ordered the chief not to give him a shift on the Havre Police Department. So had they fired Scott Wood, Scott Wood could take it to court, go to civil service, he could go through the process, and he could get his job back, showing, "They fired me for no reason. They fired me because I ran against the mayor, that's why they fired me." But they didn't do that. Instead, they just decided not to give him a shift. So you're not fired, you just can't make any money. You're not working, you're still a Havre police officer technically, you're just not working, you're not gonna make any money. This is what these scummy corrupt politicians do at the local level, because ninety percent of the people out there don't fucking vote. You just don't vote. You don't care about what goes on in your local community. So the people that run your local community get away with this shit every single day in every community. We can talk about Salisbury, we could talk about Newburyport, we're certainly gonna be talking about Lawrence next week. And I promise you, in every community, it's exactly the same. People in positions of power at the local level abusing their authority and using the levers of government to punish those who challenge their power. And so now, the Havre mayor, Barrett, and the Havre School Committee man, Paul Magliacetti, whom I've always liked, I actually kinda liked the guy, conspired illegally, had an illegal meeting to change the rules, to throw Scott Wood off the Whittier Tech School Committee, and then sent him a letter saying he was being thrown off the school committee, but if you wanna reapply, you can reapply. Right! So The Valley Patriot had to file another open meeting law complaint. And this time, I'm a little pissed. The first time I was aggravated, now I'm pissed. Because the first time, the Attorney General's Office did nothing. And she probably did nothing, because Melinda Barrett probably got on the phone and went, "Diversity, equity, inclusion, white privilege, white privilege!" And that works when you're dealing with the state, because the state's run by the Democrats in Massachusetts, and that's all they care about. Is race politics, identity politics. And then using the brainwashed terms to distract everybody from what's real. And so I got a little pissed by this, because now Melinda Barrett has twice violated the open meeting law. So I filed a complaint, and this past week, the Havre School Committee had a meeting about it. And I should've brought in the clips, but I just, I've been too busy, I've been too busy with court stuff. They had a meeting, and they decided that, "Well, we did it wrong the first time, we didn't post it, it was an illegal meeting, it was a secret meeting. Here's what we'll do, we're gonna put it on this agenda, we're gonna do it right this time." And then, no harm, no foul, right? We corrected our mistake, where they say, "Oh, we're sorry, we didn't know." Well, they did know, because Paul Magliacetti, just recently, two months ago, went to a open meeting law training session. And Melinda Barrett had her hand slapped last November by the Attorney General's Office, when she pulled this, when she sat on the city council. While all this is going on, and here's what we haven't talked about, so I'm gonna stop blowing it out now. Because I've got a story coming in the next Valley Patriot on it. While all this is going on, the city of Lawrence decided, "You know, Scott Wood's a trained police officer, we need police officers. There's literally nothing in this guy's background that we can, that, that will stop us from hiring him. We don't have to put him through the academy, we don't have to train him. The guy could come in, go through like the Bridge Academy, like, just catch up on his classes, and we could stick him on the street, and we've got a, a well- well-trained police officer that for 10 years served in Haverhill without one complaint. And served in Methuen without one complaint. And served at Merrimack College without one complaint. So Brian DePina decided he was going to hire this guy, started things in motion. And then wouldn't you know it, the Democrats in Haverhill reached out through Lawrence Police Lieutenant, I think he's a lieutenant, is he a sergeant now? Mike Samad. Mike Samad decided he was going to get involved in all this. And all of a sudden phone calls start getting made. Right around the time William Castro becomes acting chief. And William Castro says, listen, I looked at his background. I didn't see anything. I'm going to put the guy on. I'm going to put the guy, I'm going to make him a police officer. And then they targeted William Castro. And now William Castro is out on leave, leaving Scott Wood hanging in Lawrence. Wait till I tell you this. If you're driving, pull over just for a couple of seconds. I don't want you to hit anything. So Lawrence Mayor Brian DePina told me himself just a few days ago, that when it came to Scott Wood, as soon as Castro went out on leave, he went to the city attorney and asked the city attorney for an opinion as to what they should do. And city attorney, Tim Hooton, who has a very serious conflict of interest on this, advised the mayor to fire Scott Wood. Remember, they already hired the guy. They already put him through. He's already academy trained. They already had him sign the documents. And then they said, oh, wait a minute. Oh, Mike Samad's making phone calls and Melinda Barrett's chief of staff is making phone calls and Melinda Barrett's making phone calls and Melinda Barrett's political flunkeys are making phone calls to stop Scott Wood. Think about this. To stop Scott Wood from becoming a police officer in another community. If that's not abuse of power, folks, I don't know what is. Honestly, I don't know what is. This has nothing to do with Haverhill. It has nothing to do with her job as the Haverhill mayor. And the city attorney never disclosed, because I asked the mayor yesterday, did this guy disclose to you that he sat on the Middleton Board of Selectmen with Melinda Barrett's chief of staff? Did he disclose that to you when he gave you his incorrect legal decision advice to fire Scott Wood over a text message 25 years ago that never happened? Did he disclose that to you? And the mayor said, no, he did not. I had no idea that this guy sat on the Middleton Board of Selectmen with Melinda Barrett's chief of staff. Didn't disclose it. But boy, this guy, Tim Hooton, his name just keeps coming across my desk and coming across my desk and coming across my desk. So this is now the eighth or ninth time and now I've had enough. Now I've had enough. If you're part of this, you're going to be in the story. In any way, if you're part of this, Paul Magliacetti, Melinda Barrett, her chief of staff, Tim Hooton, everybody in, Mike Samad, everybody involved in these shenanigans, Sandy Picard, who if she steps out of line one more time, we're going to talk about what happened with my father's memorial. And that will be on the front page of the paper if you guys keep screwing with Scott Wood. You know, I'm defending Scott Wood because I applied for the police department back in 1991. I was at the top of the list to be appointed and they appointed 23 guys over me because they didn't like my politics. Because I had run for school committee and I had pissed off political people. And I sued and I won. And Judge Welch had three enforcement orders against the city and they violated the orders to hire other people. So that by the time I went in court again, I'd be too old to be able to serve as a police officer. And no one came to defend me. And now I see someone else going through the exact same frigging thing. And it really goes right up my back. And I'm tired of it. I'm tired of the local corruption. You know, and you know what else I'm tired of? I'm tired of people like Tim Wood putting his finger on the scale. I'm tired of the Newburyport Daily News in Salisbury and a Newburyport putting their finger on the scale. I'm tired of the Eagle Tribune up in North Andover not putting their finger on the scale, but throwing the scale in the frigging closet and doing nothing about anything. The only time they expose something is if they don't like you, then they come after you. But otherwise, they've got nothing to say about local elected and appointed officials who abuse their power to punish their political enemies. And I'm really getting sick of it. So I have asked the Attorney General this time. You let it go last time and look at where we are. Melinda Barrett did it again now as president of the Haverhill School Committee. I want a thousand dollar fine on Paul Magliacetti and Melinda Barrett and every member of that Haverhill School Committee who violated the open meeting law. And I actually said this in my appeal. Because if you don't, three months from now, I'm going to be sitting here writing another open meeting law complaint because you guys have let them get away with it now twice. So can we just cut the shit here? Like, can we, can we stop with the diversity, equity, inclusion, white privilege? Oh my God, slavery 400 years ago. Can we stop with all of that and talk about what's real? Can we talk about a mayor? Whatever her stripe is, whatever her, whatever her, 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 her gender, her, her, uh, race, her political affiliation? Can we just talk about local elected officials following the same flipping standard as everybody is supposed to? Following the law? All we hear from Democrats is nobody's above the law, not even Donald Trump. But then you look at what they're doing and they're not following the law themselves. And it makes you, it makes you really understand why good people don't run for city council in their local communities anymore. Why good people don't run for school committee in their local communities anymore. Because if they can do this to Scott Wood, who had power, sat on the school committee, sat on the Whittier Tech School Committee, was a police officer. This guy had a bully pulpit. He hasn't, he has avenues to fight back. If they can do this to him, what chance do you have? What chance do you have in your local community to try and make a difference? Because the minute you, you run afoul of the corrupt political insiders, they're going to destroy you. Not just in your own community, but any job you seek after that. And that's what infuriates me. That this happens in Lawrence. It happened certainly in Methuen. We'll then be talking about that soon. Right? It's, we've already proved it with, uh, Ron Tony Giordano in Salisbury. We proved it in, in, in North Andover. We've proved it in, in Newburyport. Listen, I could hire a staff of 20 people tomorrow if I could afford it and still never run out of things to write about. There was so much corruption going on in the Merrimack Valley, just the Merrimack Valley alone. We're not even talking about across the country or across New England, just in the Merrimack Valley alone. If I had 20 staff members, staff writers right now that I brought on board, we would still not be able to get to every story that comes across my desk. And I apologize every day when someone calls me and says, Tom, I've got a great story for you. And I hear their story and I go, man, I wish I had time to get to that. Like, I really wish I had time to get, I've got a story right now with Gary Dolan, a friend of mine who's a lawyer, who exposed a corrupt judge and then they disbarred him for it. They disbarred this guy for exposing a corrupt judge and he's got the proof. And now he's fighting for his life in court every day and I don't even have time to get to that story. You know what I told him? Listen, Gary, I wish I could, but if you write the story, I'll publish it. So part two is in this edition of the Valley Patriot. Part one is on the Valley Patriot website. I actually have to have this guy write his own story because I can't get to it. Because you've got this kind of bullshit going on in Haverhill. You've got what's going on in Lawrence. We're going to talk about next week. You've got what's going on in Methuen that's been going on for the last four years. You got the Ron Tony Lisa Pearson situation going on in Salisbury. And I could go on and on and on. And again, never run out of things to talk about. Never run out of things to write about. And where's the Tribune? Where's WHAV? Where's the Boston Globe? Where's the Boston Herald? Where's the Lowell Sun? Where are these people? They're nowhere. Like literally, when I die, these people are all going to celebrate. They're going to have one big block party across the Merrimack Valley that the only guy that was holding them accountable is no longer here. Cause then they're going to be able to get away with murder. If not for me, who's exposing this stuff? And that's not to pat myself on the back. It's not that I'm doing an incredible job. It's not that I'm a genius. Honestly, it's not. All I have to do is show up because nobody else is showing up. All I have to do is take the call. Cause the Tribune is not taking your call. And what does that say for First Amendment free speech in the Merrimack Valley? Once I'm gone, there's nothing left. And I keep looking. I keep, I keep hoping that Tim, Tim Coco is going to come back over to the good side. He was good for so long. And then I don't know, the last couple of years, I don't know what happened. And you had at least a few people at the Eagle Tribune that were trying. They're not trying anymore. Free speech is over. Free speech is over. Well, I'll tell you what. I am going to follow this. Uh, I'm going to be speaking to people at the Attorney General's Office. I'm also going to be speaking to Paul Tucker's office, the Essex County District Attorney, because I think that there are criminal charges here that could be filed for interfering with an election. And I will update you guys. I will update you guys on the Lisa Pearson situation in Salisbury. Next week, we're going to talk a lot about Lawrence. And hopefully I'm going to be around for a while to be able to talk about these things. I don't know how much time I got left. None of us do. But for as long as I'm here, I'm going to be sounding the, the alarm bells every single day. Because if I don't do it, if I take a vacation, if I take a day off, nobody's doing it. There's nobody out there doing it. There are no local bloggers. There's no local people doing it. I wish there were. I wish I had competition on this stuff, but it's just not there. All right. You can roll that up, Chrissy. Uh, we want to thank Century 21, McLennan Real Estate, the Zanny Pesci Law Office, Pleasant Valley Landscaping Contractors, AFC Urgent Care, Clear Path for Veterans New England, Tomo and Shake and Seafood, Time Out Sports Bar in Haverhill, EIS Investigation and Marsane and Sun Construction and a free shout out. To our buddies at JG's Ice Cream. Thank you, Chrissy, for dealing with my rant today. Was that okay? Did I do all right?
Yeah, you did fine. I was just laughing at your dramatic pause. A free shout out to...
I, I get such cotton mouth. It's weird. When I smoked, I smoked three packs a day and I never had cotton mouth. Now that I don't smoke anymore, I have like a jug of water and Gatorade on my desk at work and I'm constantly refilling it. Constantly. I don't get it, but. Telling you to go home. Well, hopefully I wasn't too worked up today.
Keep that blood pressure down.
That's true. Actually, blood pressure is the least of my worries at the moment. All right. Melvin Taylor says you gotta go home, so go home already.
The views and opinions expressed by the hosts, guests, or callers of this program do not necessarily reflect the opinions of the Studio 21 Podcast Cafe, the United Podcast Network, its partners or affiliates.